I already heard it, yeah.
Yeah.
Get healthy.
Yeah. I heard that.
It's a lot of those.
Yeah.
The what?
This one.
Yeah, yeah. It is. Sir? We're on, we're live.
Hi, welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, February 11th, 2016, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dell.
Present.
Commissioner Minier.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt.
Here.
The records show Commissioner Anderson is absent.
May I have a motion to adopt agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So for the consent calendar, items listed as consent calendar are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. So prior to taking this motion, I'd like to know if anyone wants to remove anything from the consent calendar?
No.
No?
No?
No.
I actually had something to add to the December 10th, 2015 minutes. Should I just email it to you? Or should I mention it now?
Or you want to just read it into the record or mention it into the record?
Okay, sure. So basically on page 17, I think we meant to strike... One, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down, I think we meant to strike the extra "though" right after the word "at," uh, "that," which is the fifth word down next, right? And then on page 25, I wanted to add that I also asked for similarly situated cases that my job is to facilitate and not dominate the conversation. And the applicant's presentation was like the other two previous presentations that we had in a public hearings, which are just primarily for clarification and review. And I also asked, I suggested that the audience review the chapter four, especially the mitigation matrix. Thank you. So those are my edits. Other than that, I don't have any, any new suggestions for January 14th. So with that, can we go ahead and adopt the consent calendar?
If you could accept the motion or entertain a motion.
Okay. Could I get a motion to have the amendments included in the December 10th, 2015 minutes?
You second that? Oh.
I'll make a motion to adopt action minutes for, with edits for, what, January 14th?
No, December 10th.
Oh, sorry, December 10th.
Can I have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So on to oral communications. That's a limit of 15 minutes for anyone who wants to address the commission on issues not on the agenda. Does anyone in the audience want to address the commission on issues not on the agenda? No? Okay, thank you. So written communications, we have one from Ms. Robin, or Mr. Robin Frost regarding the issue of 166 San Benito Road. Robin Frost is in favor of the improvements that are requested for 166 San Benito Road. Anything else we want to share with the public? No? I don't think anybody else has any additional written communications. So on to new business. Public hearing 166 San Benito Road, variance V-5-15. The variance is to allow an elevated wooden deck approximately 315 square feet in size attached to the dwelling to maintain a 9.9 inch or 0.826 foot setback from the side property line where a minimum setback of three feet is required. Patrick Moore is the applicant, Jose Acucci, thank you, or is the owner, APN 007-393-010.
And can I stay for the record? I need to queue myself. We're neighbors, so I'll be outside.
Thank you, Commissioner Minier. All right, thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening. The applicant is requesting approval of a variance to grace a elevated deck that was constructed within the side yard setback at 166 San Benito Road. This deck would at the very least maintain a 9.9 inch setback from the side property line. That would increase to about 1.94 feet at other locations due to the curvature of the property line. So just as summary of the existing development on the site, the property is a substandard lot of just under 3,000 square feet. It's located on the corner at the intersection of San Benito Road and Sierra Point. And it's a triangle lot, which means it has no real lot line, only front and side lot lines. It's currently developed with a two-story single-family home as well as the elevated deck attached to the home, that's the subject of tonight's variance request. Just as information, this home was originally built in 1968 with the benefit of variances at the time granted by the planning commission to allow substandard setbacks to both the side lot lines. It should be noted that subsequent updates to his own ordinance and amendments to those actual setback regulations mean that the home actually now conforms with all setbacks. The lot coverage on this property is under the 40% maximum, it's at 28%. So moving on to the applicant's proposal, as you can see here, the elevated deck is attached to the home and built almost flush with a concrete retaining wall. That retaining wall is supporting the Sierra Point Road right-of-way, which is just adjacent and up slope. And that's shown a little bit more clearly here in this detail. And the, just, a little information on the site itself, because the Sierra Point right-of-way is partially paved, so I mean, the roadway does not fully extend the width of the right-of-way, the property appears to be larger than it is. So subsequently, even though the deck is located adjacent to the side lot line, it appears to setback much further from the actual roadway itself. And you can see here that the deck is built above a paved parking pad that can accommodate two compact parking spaces under our parking ordinance. Just for information, the deck does not constitute lot coverage under the municipal code's definitions as it's not covered. Similarly, it would not then provide covered parking under our code. The applicant has noted in the application they do park partially under it, but just as a clarification. The lot itself is not steeply sloped, it has an average 7% slope. But as I mentioned, the adjacent Sierra Point Road right-of-way is very steeply sloped and engulges abruptly just beyond it. As you noted earlier, we did receive written correspondence on this application from a neighbor in support of the variance request. Just review some site photos again here. You can see where the deck surface is, it's almost at level with the Sierra Point right-of-way slope above the property. And this is a vantage point from Sierra Point itself, so you can see how steeply it rises up above. In order to approve a variance, the commission must make certain findings, those are detailed in the staff report, and I'll address them briefly here. Among those are that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property. In this case, the lot is a substandard size, but particularly its triangular lot shape, the slope differential between the property and the right-of-way behind results in a very, very little usable yard area. It's unusual shaped yard and it's fairly small compared to surrounding lots in the neighborhood. So similarly, privileges and driveway others in the vicinity that are deprived of the subject property are usable outdoor space. The subject property, like I mentioned, has only 28% lot coverage, so ostensibly there is a larger driveway than a lot that's available for improvements such as yard space. However, its special, its triangular size and substandard size again limits the way that the property owners can improve and use what outdoor space is available. In terms of conditions necessary to prevent a grant of special privilege, staff is recommending conditions to require fire-rated materials to be installed. This is also required to comply with California Building Code requirements for fire safety. We're also recommending that the commission require that the deck not be covered in any manner so that it would not constitute lot coverage while they do have some wiggle room and no lot coverage requirements. This is really to avoid any sort of visual impacts of bulk and mass from a bulky structure right within the setback. This is just a visual of lots in the surrounding area. So again, as you can see, this lot in particular is of a particularly odd shape in addition to its substandard size. So the staff is recommending conditional approval of the request through adoption of the draft resolution enclosed in the staff report and subject to the findings and conditions therein. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have, I do have a question. I was confused about why the secondary unit is going to be illegal, or why it is illegal. I thought that many, many of the homes in Brisbane have secondary illegal units. And I, for some reason, thought a lot of them were grandfathered in. Is, do we have any information about that?
Sure.
And why this one, and why this one, they have to dismantle the secondary unit?
Sure, so I think you're correct. Yes, there have been many units, secondary dwelling units that were grandfathered in, so to speak, because they could, there was proof or evidence in the record that they had existed prior to adoption of our current regulations. That's not the case here in particular, so that, that isn't a universal condition that would apply to any property. In this particular case, it's not permitted, which is why we're recommending the abatement. And as I understand, I think it's already been taken care of by the applicants, which they can speak to.
So, so anytime that we discover a secondary unit that is not grandfathered in, we're going to actually ask them to abandon it, even though we need secondary units? Is that, I, I don't understand.
There is a process for obtaining a secondary dwelling unit permit. There are certain requirements for parking and lot size, et cetera. In this particular case, the lot being substandard in size is not eligible to have a secondary dwelling unit. But certainly, in any case where an illegal unit is found and they're, and they qualify for applying for a secondary dwelling unit permit, you know, they always have that option. This particular case, the, the site conditions don't allow for that under the code.
Okay. And we know how, approximately how long the secondary unit had been in existence, or we don't?
We can't say that for sure. Again, there's no evidence in the record, so meaning prior building permits, or where we encountered a secondary dwelling unit. So we just don't have record of that in our property file.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions regarding that. Do we have any specific procedure that people, that USO wants to make that as legal?
Oh, sorry.
USO wants to make it a legal unit. Is there, is there a form or somewhere they can get the help to get it done? Like San Francisco has a program where they can help you get the, the unit legalized. Do we have similar thing here?
I don't know if we have a, a program per se specifically for that, but I know that any property owner that wished to legalize a secondary dwelling unit that wasn't currently permitted can always come to the planning department and we're happy to walk through the process with them.
So basically complying with the existing law, uh, order, the codes?
Sure.
To bring it up to the code in the U.
Correct.
And if they don't have the adequate parking, then that will be a concern noted too, right?
Sure. And in that case, I think, you know, there is already a process by which people can apply for a use permit for parking modification, which if it was a lot that was of adequate size but could not provide the required parking, then yes, the applicant could choose to apply for a conditional use permit from you in order to legalize that unit without the onsite parking.
Does this help you, Commissioner Carolyn Parker?
Um, no, I just wanted to understand more about the process because, I mean, we have so many here. You know, I don't know how many, but many of the homes I've visited have secondary units. And I'm not sure how many of them were.
Yeah.
When they were, when they were put in, a lot of them are vacant, but still they're there.
Yeah, as long as there is a process, they have the option to legalize it. The other question is, did the fire department review that and they have any concerns or express any concern?
Yes. This project was reviewed by the fire department and the building department. And the applicant's design of the fire-rated materials that's shown in the project plans are specifically in response to comments they received from building.
How about the access in the back from there? Is there any issues for the firefighting?
That was not identified by the fire or building departments in terms of access.
Okay.
They did not have a concern with that.
Is there a nearby fire hydrant that they can reach over there, or, oh, that was analyzed?
I imagine there's a, I think actually there's a fire hydrant in the Sierra Point Road right-of-way right behind this home. I don't think exactly there, but, but I know there's one in the area. But again, that, that was not identified as a concern by fire or building.
Okay, thanks.
So at this time, let's open it up to the public hearing. Could I have a motion to open it up to a public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Miss Chair, Commissioners, planners, um, anyone? Okay, thank you. My name is Patrick Moore, architect, 115 Valencia Street, San Francisco. I'm representing the Acucci family, Jose Acucci, his wife and kid. And I think Julie explained the project very well. Essentially, the deck was built to provide some open space to the main floor of the house. I would like to clarify on the stairs that we have, let me see, there's stairs going up to the deck there from the house. Let me see if I have another picture. These stairs right here on the right, they were existing though before. There was a way to get up to the unit from the ground floor. And there are no access actually to, to the main unit. So if they wanted to enjoy some open space, there are no balcony or no other area at that level that they can enjoy some open space. And you see, the lower picture is the kitchen, so there's no, no access to any open areas. That is the lower unit, the lower floor. And you can see on the left stairs reaching up to the main level. And on the right-hand side, bottom is the small little deck to enter the garage. The unit, the second door unit is in the back. You see the door in the back. And that's showing the bottom right picture there. That's a door to the sort of illegal unit. And that's a kitchen of that unit from which the range has been removed. It's no longer a, a kitchen anymore, it has a sink only. And that means how far the deck is from Sierra Point Road. The, the basic reason for the, to request that the deck not be removed from the requise back is that it would be a really deep gap at the edge of the deck when it's cut back by, by the requise back, just three feet. And that would leave a deep gap in there that was of no purpose really. And it would all accumulate or other things like, for instance, you see here in the right top picture, there's the end of the deck with the triangular shape. And there will be cut there and it will be a big gap between the house, the deck, and the retaining wall. The retaining wall is very high. And I'm not sure when it was installed. I have some outlines on my file. I think it was installed about 20 years ago. It's a concrete back retaining wall. And this is the front, that is, there was a two small retaining walls that had the rolling there, but practically set no purpose. It was just intended to be installed there for decoration, but it's been removed. And so those are retaining walls just, they can be planted to embarrass the corner, which is fairly bare. And I think those are all the pictures that I have. So essentially, the, the request is to accept the variance, not to remove the portion of the deck that would be unsightly and perhaps not safe. The owners are willing to comply with all the conditions of approval and for proof the components of the deck are necessary to comply with code. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
No, no.
No?
No questions.
Thank you. Okay? Anyone want to address the commission about the 166 San Benito Road? Anyone else? No? Please step forward. Oh, could you step forward? Yeah. Are you Ms. Frost?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
My name is Robin Frost. My name is Robin Frost. I'm, I live next door to the house. I'm at 164 San Benito. And I support the addition of the, the deck for several reasons. I think it enhances the rentability of, of the home. I think it will draw a, potentially a, a young family, because it, it is space that could be used for, you know, light recreation, you know, getting the baby out of the apartment and, and getting some fresh air. But it's, it's a safe space and it's large enough that you could actually, that, you know, a toddler could actually play safely on that if they put a safety gate up. So it's, it's actually exterior space that this place wouldn't have otherwise. They have a tiny little backyard that's very, very deep because of this huge retaining wall that is, is at the, the property line, that was built by the city. Because everything to the street side of that retaining wall is city right-of-way. So, so it's, it's something that is, I think, is necessary, the retaining wall. And if, if you made the, the deck narrower, bringing it away from the retaining wall, there would be a big gap that would be about eight feet, eight feet deep. And I think it could be dangerous. And I think the way it is now, I don't think it's a fire hazard to be that close to the retaining wall, because basically it's not next to another residence or anything like that. It's just, it's next to the, the thoroughfare, basically. So it enhances what I think is the appearance of the property as well, and it provides for a parking space on level surface. They have a very steep driveway otherwise that, to be able to reach the garage. And so the off-street parking that's, that's on the, the corner where the, the deck is, is, is the only level parking off of the street there. And to have a covered parking space would be also one way to enhance the, the property and make it more rentable for a, a nice family or couple, I would think. So that was my, my purpose. I think it really looks good, too. They've done a lot with the property. And the former owners for 30 years hadn't done a thing with the property. So they've, they've really done quite a bit. And it, I think it makes it much nicer for the whole neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion.
I'm ready to approve it.
I have a question for the staff. What they have to do to make that parking space legal that they created?
Um, for it to be a co- covered parking spot?
Covered parking space.
Um, well, the difficult thing is, so we have minimum dimensions that are required to be considered a legal parking space. So on that paved pad, there is adequate space on the pad itself to accommodate two compact spaces, which are eight by 16. The way that those, to accommodate those spaces clear, where we would consider them located on the pad itself, they're not quite covered by the deck entirely, the, the spaces that would meet our legal definition of a, a parking space. Additionally, like I said, the deck itself doesn't, isn't considered a solid covering or solid surface. And our code specifically says that in order to be considered covered parking, it has to be a roof-like structure, a solid structure, like a carport roof, for example. So both the nature of the deck in that it's not really a covered surface and the fact that it's not fully covering the spaces anyway. So again, that's our legal definition of it in the zoning ordinance. If the applicant parks their car under it and happens to consider that being a covered spot for their convenience, get out of the rain in some sort of way, they may enjoy it that way, but our code doesn't define it as such.
There will be a violation of the code, right?
It wouldn't be a violation, it just wouldn't be considered, oh, that, that's covered parking just because they parked their car under it.
So the reason I'm asking is I don't want anybody to give them a ticket saying that you can.
Oh, no, 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 there's no legal prohibition of parking under that deck. It just doesn't.
As long as, as long as understandable that they can still go ahead and park it.
Of course, yes.
But they cannot claim that as to.
Yes, they can't claim it exactly as covered parking.
So I think that's, that's good enough for me. That, that's fine. So I make a motion to go ahead and approve this variance.
Do you have anything to say yourself?
No, I, I'm good with what was said and what was given to us.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Enjoy the new.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. So on to public hearing, zoning text amendment, RZ-3-15. Amendment Title 17 of the Brisbane Municipal Code, modify the landscaping development standards to be consistent with the state's requirements for one.
standards to be consistent with the state's requirements for when irrigated landscapes are subject to the water conservation and landscaping ordinance, BMC, Chapter 15.70, City of Brisbane is the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you. The request is to amend the landscaping requirements in the Brisbane Municipal Code, which are contained in the development regulations for the various zoning districts addressed in Title 17. Title 17 includes general landscaping provisions within the zoning district development regulations. Those provisions include cross-references to the city's water conservation and landscaping ordinance, which is contained in Title 15, the municipal code. Title 15 is not a part of the commission's purview, but it is discussed and provided in your agenda report to provide essentially a backdrop for the proposed amendment to Title 17, since these are cross-referenced. By way of background, the city updated the Water Conservation and Landscaping Ordinance in 2010, based on the BASKA model, that's the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. And that was to be more conserving than the state's new ordinance back in 2010. And more recently, in response to the statewide four-year drought, Governor Brown issued an executive order last April, which directed the Department of Water Resources to update the state's model water-efficient landscape ordinance. And that was through expedited regulation. That ordinance was adopted by the state last July. BASKA then drafted a new template model ordinance for the jurisdictions in the Bay Area to use as guidance in drafting their own local ordinances. And that's, again, to be more water-conserving than the state's new ordinance. That was provided to the jurisdictions back just in December. So at this point in time, the effective ordinance for new landscaping projects in Brisbane is the state's ordinance until such time that the city council adopts an ordinance that at least is water-conserving as the state's ordinance. So again, the commission, since the commission does not have purview over Title 15 of the municipal code, the ordinance before you is simply to amend those cross-references that are in Title 17 to be consistent with current state law regarding new irrigation landscape projects. Then the planning commission's recommendation will be brought to city council along with the draft ordinance for Title 15. Specifically, the ordinance before you would provide for broader language in Title 17. The cross-references would now simply refer to the water conservation ordinance without including a specific size threshold. It currently refers to an applicability threshold of 1,000 square feet, which is no longer the case. The intent in Title 17 is to direct the reader to Chapter 1570 for irrigated landscapes where further specificity would be provided. This broader language would also provide for greater flexibility for any future updates of the water conservation ordinance without the need to also update Title 17 yet again. So in closing, staff recommends adoption of Resolution RZ-315 to recommend to city council adoption of the draft ordinance.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for the staff?
No.
No, clear.
It's pretty straightforward.
You're basically trying to be in compliance with the state?
Exactly.
Okay. Now, the, in the red area where you strike out new and replacement irrigated landscaping, that's not part of the state language, is it?
No, that's, so this, what's in Title 17 is our, it's our, simply a cross-reference that we added back in 2010, 2011. After we had updated Chapter 1570, we wanted to have a reference. So if somebody was looking through the, the specific district regulations, they would see, oh, I also have to, if I have an irrigated landscape, I have to comply with this other ordinance, so to check there. Now it just leaves that broader. And so they're, they're still directed there, but, but without that 1,000-square-foot threshold.
So there is no threshold anymore now?
There is a threshold, but it's lower. That's why we need to remove the 1,000.
Is it less than 1,000?
It's a, it's, it was 1,000 for Brisbane. The statewide threshold before was 2,500 square feet, but the state dropped it to 500. So at this point, 1,000 is not consistent with the state.
Okay. So this is, so basically, the state, we're not saying anything about the limitation of square footage or anything, just follow the state law.
Exactly. It's broad language, just to capture that.
That's good. Thank you. I have no other questions.
No other questions?
I do have questions, but not about this per se, but how is this going to impact some of the bigger landscaped areas in the next few years? Are they going to have to really change the irrigation system to come into compliance? Or are they going to have to pull up and replace with mulch? Some of the?
There are provisions for existing landscapes, which I would honestly have to study more to give you. I don't know what those are, but there are provisions in the new ordinance which would address, it's more having to do with maintenance of, of those existing systems and, and ensuring that the systems do not get leaks that are undetected and those sorts of things that, that are big water washers for existing systems. But it doesn't force you to essentially change out an existing system. If you were to landscape, that's the point at which you would be subject to the, to the other portions of the ordinance.
Okay, so it's similar than, to what it was five years ago?
Very similar, right.
There really are no changes, except?
Well, there's, there's some tweaks here and there in those parts, but the major change is really the reduction in the size of the, the irrigated landscape.
Because, yeah, I couldn't tell any differences except that one point.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no questions for me. Looks good.
Okay. And seeing no one in the audience, we don't need to open it up to public hearing?
No.
So can we make a decision, make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion to recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance, amending the zoning text based on the discussion and analysis presented in this agenda report, the adoption of Resolution RZ-1-16.
Is it?
We're just going to make sure the record reflects accurately.
I'm sorry, there's a, there's a typo. It is 315.
Yeah, 316, okay. 315.
It's 315. To make it clear.
It's actually stuck in last year.
Okay, the motion's been made.
It's actually 316, right?
It's 315 because we assigned this application number in December. It's 315.
315, correct.
315.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. You're moving along tonight.
Okay. So, public hearing three, zoning text amendment, RZ-1-16. Amendment Title 17 of the Brisbane Municipal Code to Implement Housing Element Program, HB1F, amending the definition of single-family dwelling, modifying the existing regulations to achieve internal consistency within the municipal code, and to amend the appeals process for planning commission decisions. Chapters to be amended include Chapter 17.02, definitions, Chapter 17.32, general use regulations, and Chapter 17.52, appeals. City of Brisbane is the applicant.
Let's give the city a hard time.
Hopefully not. Okay. So again, this application is to amend various sections of Title 17, the city's zoning ordinance. Those amendments include an updated definition of single-family dwelling. This is consistent with the recently adopted housing element that requires us to do so. Other amendments are proposed to modify existing regulations within the zoning ordinance to achieve internal consistency and match better with current development review practice. The third class of amendments, I guess we could refer to them as, are to the planning commission appeals process. This is contained in Chapter 17.52 of the code. And just to clarify, these amendments do not propose any changes to existing zoning districts or the boundaries of a district for any property. So the proposal to amend the definition of single-family home, again, this is pursuant to Housing Element Program, Program HB1F. This obliges the city to amend the definition of single-family dwelling to apply with that definition that's currently in the California Health and Safety Code. And that's Section 1702, 1.5 of the Health and Safety Code. This amendment would ensure that the use of a single-family dwelling as employee housing for six or fewer persons would not be treated as a boarding or rooming house use, that instead it would be considered a single-family use, just as any other single-family home would be. The, again, the California Health and Safety Code precludes the city from requiring a conditional use permit variance or other discretionary permit for employee housing, so long as it serves six or fewer employees in a single-family zoning district. Moving on to other amendments, which we've classified as intended to resolve internal inconsistencies in the code, these are in Chapter 17.32, which is the general regulations chapter. We'll go into detail on all of these. I think in summary, most of them truly are what we would almost call cleanup, correcting references to previous zoning districts that no longer exist. One that I will mention, the amendment proposed to BMC 17.32.200 regarding satellite television receivers. The particular amendment we're proposing is to remove the requirement for a conditional use permit for satellite television receivers for residential properties. We're recommending that that condition still apply to commercial properties, but I think, as explained in the staff report, it's not a very implementable requirement, nor have we actually processed a use permit for a residential television satellite receiver. So moving on, unless there are more questions at the end, I think I'll move on to the proposed amendments to Chapter 17.52, the appeals process for planning commission actions. These amendments came from the city, city council policy committee drafted with the city attorney, city attorney's assistance. Essentially, the intended amendments would not clarify the timeframe for submitting an appeal to a planning commission decision. It would also change the terms used to apply to when city council members appeal a commission decision. And it would also change the current process in terms of how the report on the commission's action would be presented to the council. So our current code allows two pathways to appealing a planning commission decision. One is that any, any individual may file a timely appeal within 15 days of that decision. The other pathway is that any two council members may also file an appeal within 15 days of the commission's decision. After which, the commission is called to repair a report and submit that report to the city council, at which time the council hears the appeal and may affirm, reverse, or modify the commission's decision. So the proposed amendments would essentially, within 50 days, I'm sorry, change the timeframe from 30 days, as it is currently, to 60 days after the clerk receives the appeal, during which the council must render a decision. This gives the council more time. It allows for more flexibility in scheduling of the appeal, I think, and is a little bit more manageable, just from a staff scheduling perspective. The other proposed amendment would be to reclassify a council member's appeal of a decision rather than referring to it as an appeal. It would be a referral. So this isn't just semantics. I think the proposed amendment using the word referral reflects the fact that the council members would not be disqualified from participating in review of that appeal, I'm sorry, of that reconsideration should, should they have requested its referral. The county, the city attorney has referenced recent case law in which there has been questions of whether a council member has shown bias or not shown bias.
This was through this state itself, or is it in our county or what?
The city attorney doesn't specify. I think the reason this is coming up now is just because the city attorney identified it as something that probably should be addressed in our code. So changing the classification of a, of a council referral, also there's added language that would state, the reasons for the referral, again, does not necessarily mean disagreement with the commission's decision. It may be because of matters of citywide interest, that there's new information that's come to light, or because of perceived procedural irregularities with the commission's process. So again, it's a phrase that better fits the actual reasons why a council member may want the issue to be discussed at council level after it's gone to commission for decision. The other proposed amendment would really be a change to reflect the actual practice, that it's actually the planning department that typically repairs the, the report for the council. No changes are proposed to the standard contents of that report. It would essentially just recognize existing practice. It would also eliminate some of the timing constraints that have come up when we get an appeal and a report is presented for review prior to actually going to hearing at city So I think I'll end my report there, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions?
I have some questions.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Excuse me. Regarding the television satellite receiver, you mean the regular mine is on? Can you hear me now? Okay. Regarding the television satellite receiver, you mean just the dish that they install on top of the residence?
Correct.
It's not, so suppose a satellite company wants to install a dish at a residential structure that can supply several residences, that will not be allowed?
That would not be permitted. Any sort of, any satellite receiver intended for commercial use of any kind would be subject to a conditional use permit requirement.
Okay. Now, this doesn't extend to the cell phone towers and all that?
No, this is specifically satellite television receivers.
The other question I have is regarding the flood hazard mapping. An outdated reference to the flood hazard mapping and other provisions. I'd like to see what that outdated provision was. Is that the FEMA is the one that decides, comes up with the flooding maps, right? Flooding, flood zone maps? Are there any discrepancy with that or what?
So if you go to attachment A, which is a table with red line text, at the very bottom, that section is 17.32.230. So essentially, this section in the zoning code was referring to how development applications should be reviewed for compliance or any concerns regards, in regarding to flood plan management or flood hazards. That process itself lives and is housed in Title 15 of our code. This particular zoning amendment, I think, dates from the zoning section, dates from the 80s, at which time that boundary map, that map has been updated many times since the 80s. So instead of replacing that reference, say, with a, with the current map that we would be referring to, what we're proposing instead is that we remove that reference to that map, which is out of date, and replace it with text directing to Title 15, to Chapter 15.56, which does, again, that's where all of our regulations regarding flood hazard management is housed in the code.
But in that particular chapter, does it refer, refer to the FEMA maps?
To current FEMA maps, yes.
And what's the status of the current FEMA maps right now, as it relates to the city of Brisbane?
They were just updated last year, I believe. Is that not correct? I think the flooding chance rate maps, FEMA maps, were updated 2015, or maybe a little earlier, maybe 2014. We got them last year.
Because I heard that there was some discrepancy and there was some kind of, you know, disagreement between the city and. between the city and the FEMA maps, especially in the downtown area. Is, is that been resolved?
Yeah, the city engineer is the, sort of the administrator of the city's flood plan, and I don't have personal knowledge of that, but I understand he did not file any kind of letter of objection to FEMA's adopted maps.
The reason I'm saying that is because it's very important that we meet the, or abide by the FEMA maps, excuse me, because otherwise it will be very difficult to get the flood insurance. And I, unfortunately, I don't have chapter fifteen fifty-six in front of me, but I want to make sure that we do not take anything, any reference out of the, that chapter or anywhere that says we don't have to comply with the FEMA hazard maps, flood zones, flood zones map.
Correct. And we're not proposing any amendments to title fifteen at this time, so just the reference to, within the zoning ordinance itself, to a map that is not currently used.
So that, so what we're saying is that will still be the maps generated by FEMA?
Correct.
Not anybody else?
This amendment would direct any sort of, regarding flood hazard areas in the zoning ordinance, it says, please refer to title fifteen, essentially is what it's saying. That's where those regulations live. If they're ever updated, that's where they'll be updated in title fifteen.
And there's much more in title fifteen than just the map. There's a whole sort of administrative procedures about what the flood plan administrator is supposed to do, what resources they're supposed to evaluate, et cetera, et cetera. So actually by referring to this other chapter is actually giving an applicant or anybody a much more full picture of what the city's requirements and obligations are as opposed, and their obligations under that, those provisions, as opposed to just looking at the FEMA map, which is incorporated by reference in chapter fifteen.
And what's the responsibility of the flood hazard administrator? Can he overrule the FEMA's new maps that come up and say?
No, there's a, there's a process where the city, through the flood plan administrator, can request FEMA to do what's called a letter of map provision. For example, if there are hydrological data that they were to submit to FEMA to show that FEMA's maps needed to be revised, there's a process by which that's done, but they have to submit that to FEMA for FEMA to, to either accept it or reject it. The city, the flood plan administrator cannot unilaterally modify the FEMA map, but there's a process where if he, in their judgment, and there's hydro, hydrological work that demonstrates the belief that that information isn't accurate, there's a process to rectify that.
So as far as my understanding, that the FEMA maps govern?
Yes.
Under all circumstances?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And the last question I had was regarding the changes to the planning, the appeals process and, and all that. What's the concern raised regarding the Mr. Ray Miller's appearance at one of the housing element hearing? Is that addressed here than anywhere?
No, that wasn't really at issue. There are probably a couple cases, A Thomas, those buildings, the design permits on Sierra Point, where the council, you know, the, the two council members decided to appeal the item. That was what I think precipitated this whole discussion, and I think the question of that, an appeal conated, maybe a connotation that, well, that someone had predetermined the outcome, because they were filing an appeal of this body's action, and that somehow they were predetermined what their decision would be, and that was of concern to the city attorney. So that idea of a referral doesn't have the same connotation that they're taking sort of issue or disagreeing with the commission's action, they just want to refer it for, again, as the reasons Julia pointed out in the staff report, that they could refer it for a number of reasons. It's not that they disagree with, and they shouldn't be, and they're not then bound by some sort of presumption while they've already made up their mind about this case without hearing, going through an appeals, formal appeal hearing or referral hearing. So I think it was really more of the city attorney's suggestion and guidance that, that language just be cleared up.
So as far as the presence of a council member at the follow-up, you know, hearings at the planning commission, is it still allowed? Like Mr. Ray Miller, when he showed up, there was some objection raised?
There's nothing in this form of procedure that would have, speaks to that, and that it's, it doesn't, doesn't allow it, it doesn't disallow it, it's not relevant to this particular.
So there's no reason to, to clarify it here in this, when we're doing the update?
No, because again, that wasn't even an appeal per se, it was, it was sort of the question of reconsideration by this body, not, not the council doing something about a planning commission action. So it's really not, this section really isn't applicable.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
So it's more understanding that any person on the planning commission who feels that they, that the planning commission made a recommendation or a decision, and they feel that this, maybe the city council should look at it because maybe there weren't enough people who knew about it, that's okay, right? That, that's covered in here, right?
No, I mean, any person, any planning commissioner who wants to individually appeal the commission's action after the fact, they want to pay the appeal fee and file that appeal with the city council, they can do so. There's no provision for the planning commission to request, sort of just as a body, request the council to consider their action or reconsider their action. There's no provision for that. So any, a commission would have to be acting as an individual to, to file an appeal.
All right. I personally like this. I think this tightens it up quite a bit. There was a lot of anger a couple of times about some, the fact that things were appealed and, you know, we can always bring this out and show people, you know, that this is a normal process and this is the process, and I think that probably would, I think this is good. I'm happy about it.
Same here.
Agreed.
Agreed. No, it's smart, change the appeals and referrals language. I think that's.
I had a clarification question. So assuming that a council member wants to make a referral, they would be making referral as a council member, but they could file an appeal as an individual? Or no?
It takes two council members for a referral.
Okay. It says that here.
That would be very, I, I guess, there's nothing that would preclude the council person from filing an appeal, but then again, there probably would be legal issues of them hearing an appeal that they filed because they are now taking a position on this, so they have...
So even as individuals, they would have to recuse themselves from that?
That's what my...
Yeah. And I wasn't clear as to that because we're talking about referrals, so I wasn't sure how far extended in terms of...
Anything that goes to a citizen, everyone in, every, every resident would have that right, whether they're an elected, appointed, or a city official, if that's the route they chose.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to clarify that. Okay? Okay, given that it was recommended by the policy committee of the city council, and that makes, I think that gives us a pretty bright line as to how to proceed with those kind of issues. So I think you're right, there were two, two outstanding cases, that A Thomas and then the, the two buildings at Sierra Point, that, that raised a lot of concern and issues because it wasn't very clear. Okay. So we would like to have a motion to approve the, to adopt the amendment as presented.
I'll again go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to adopt.
Go first.
Go for it. This time I better be careful. Is this the right one? Excuse me. Okay, the, it's RZ one dash sixteen, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So I make a motion to adopt the, to recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance amending the zoning text based on the discussion and analysis presented in the agenda report via the adoption of resolution RZ dash one dash sixteen.
Good. I'll second that.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey. So, items initiated by the staff.
Just a reminder that your next regularly scheduled meeting will be another, which is the twenty fifth?
Fifth, yeah.
Do a Bayland deliberations meeting, so we won't have any sort of regular business. It'll just be Baylands deliberations.
Do we want to put that on the agenda?
That's going to be the...
Next meeting is February twenty fifth, right?
For the timing?
Okay.
Great.
So items initiated by the commission?
Yeah, I want to bring a couple of things here, and just to, this particular document that we received today, I think it's an excellent...
Yeah, we were discussing that, yeah.
I liked the way they, they presented that, and I think it should be distributed to the citizens also, maybe available at the city hall. Secondly, I want to bring up the fact that a number of cities have already signed up for that solar energy, I think, I forgot the exact terminology. It's been initiated by the San Mateo County, so is Brisbane in line with that too?
Yes, I believe the council is either scheduled to adopt the resolution to join that, what's called community clean energy, I think.
Something like that.
That was at the last meeting.
And there was a workshop, a public workshop a couple of weeks ago, I believe, that it was discussed by the council.
Yes.
So yes, they are moving forward to join that, that consortium.
Yeah, because I got the note saying that the other cities have, and they mentioned some of the cities, but Brisbane was not listed there, so I was wondering when we're going to adopt that.
It should be at the next council meeting, I believe.
Next council meeting. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that Commissioner Munir's comments about the strategies for building healthy equitable communities was really good. I think we all agreed on to that, and it actually reminded me a lot of our One Planet principles that is in our own sustainability framework, so, and it's very well put together. It's, it's nice and plain English.
People can understand.
Exactly. So, yeah, it would be really helpful. It's pretty good.
Talking about how many kinds of soda one in three children in San Mateo County drink more, one or more sodas each day, which is really alarming, you know?
I really liked the part where they talked about priorities for getting healthy San Mateo County, and then they give healthy housing, healthy neighborhoods, healthy schools, healthy economy. So it's a really nice balance. With that, I'd like to read the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council not later than fifteen calendar days, ten calendar days for subdivision and sign applicants, applications after the commission's action. An application forming fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the community development department at four one five, five zero eight, two one two zero. Anything else?
That's certain. Let's make a motion.
A motion to adjourn.
To the regular meeting of February twenty fifth, two thousand sixteen, at seven thirty P M sharp.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.